All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Boise City Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing. A few things to start out with for tonight's proceedings. Everyone from the public entering the hearing virtually has been automatically muted and cannot speak. As the item you're interested in comes up for discussion, you'll be called upon and unmuted. There is a chat function in Zoom. However, this is not part of the record and should only be used if technical difficulties arise. Our procedures for public hearings begins with a presentation from the planning team. Then we'll go to the applicant and then the representative of the Registered Neighborhood Association, followed by questions from the commission. After that, we proceed to public testimony, starting with those who are in person, then who signed up on the Senate sheet in advance, and then anyone else who raises their hand virtually. If you're attending through your telephone, you can type in star nine to raise your hand. Each member of the public is allowed up to three minutes for testimony. We are strict with this time as it is limited in code. Finally, the applicant is allowed five minutes for rebuttal, after which the hearing will be closed, and the commission will deliberate and render a decision. Mr. Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Crystal. Good evening, everyone. All right, we are citizen volunteers appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. We make final decisions on conditional use permits, variances and appeals and recommendations to the city council on subdivisions, rezones, annexations, and code or comprehensive plan amendments. Any decision made tonight may be appealed to the city council, provided that the appeal is filed within 10 days of this hearing. In order to file an appeal, you must have given written or oral testimony at tonight's meeting. So that's why it's important to give your name and address when you testify tonight. We utilize a consent agenda. This means that if the applicant agrees with the staff report, and if there is no public opposition, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. All items that are placed on the consent agenda are approved with one motion without further public comment. For items not on the consent agenda, we will hold a full public hearing in the order just detailed a few minutes ago with staff, applicant, neighborhood association, and then the public testimony. Thank you all for attending tonight. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Danley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Schaefer.
Deha.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Stallings. By present to absent.
Okay, thank you very much. So first thing up is I'm going to announce that item number one and item number two. So item number one, Z O A twenty-five dash eleven, a zoning code amendment bought forth by the city has actually been withdrawn. And item number two, C U P twenty-five dash thirty-three Adler Industrial located at twenty-six fifteen South Liberty Street, a conditional use application has also been withdrawn. So item number one and item number two have been withdrawn. So if you were here for either of those, enjoy the rest of your evening. Nobody? Oh, okay, I tried. I tried. All right, next up is the creation of the consent agenda. First item up that is eligible for the consent agenda is item A, P U D twenty-one dash fifty-six Greg Chatterton, thirty-five twenty North Jackie Lane, a time extension for a conditional use permit is the applicant in the chambers or online. Get myself together here. No, that's okay. This item is going is eligible for a time extension. So if there are no, if there's no discussion or objection, I'll go ahead and place item A on the consent agenda. Hearing none, item is placed. Okay, next up for the consent agenda is item number three. That's C U P twenty-five dash thirty-two Turf Equipment located at twenty-six twenty-three South Fry Street, a conditional use permit for light vehicle sales, et cetera. Is the applicant in the chambers or online? Okay, and do you agree with the terms and conditions in the staff report? Okay, let the record reflect that the applicant is in person and does agree with the terms and conditions of the staff report. Is there anyone here this evening in chambers or online who wishes to testify in opposition to item number three, C C U P twenty-five dash thirty-two located at twenty-six twenty-three South Fry Turf Equipment? Seeing none in chambers and seeing none online, unless objected, item number three will be placed on the consent agenda. And that concludes the creation of our consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I mean that we approve consent agenda as constructed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Don. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none with clerk, please call the roll.
Danley.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Deha.
Aye.
Torres.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Very good. Okay, so that brings us to our one and only item that we're going to hear tonight. It is comprised of three different applications. Let's see, a rezone application, a preliminary plot, and a variance located at nineteen oh seven West Jefferson. It looks like the applicant is Ben Semple. Familiar name. I'm gonna pop up and we'll give it to staff. Hi, Jesse.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The item before you is C A R twenty-five seventeen, C B A twenty-five thirty-four, and S U B twenty-five fifty. This is a rezone of approximately one point nine six acres, including adjacent rights of way located at seventeen or nineteen oh seven West Jefferson Street from R two and R three to M X one, and a variance to encroach into the rear setback. A preliminary plat for a mixed-use subdivision comprised of twenty-one residential, one commercial, and two common lots is also included. The subject properties are currently zoned R three on the southern half of the project area, as seen in the image on the left in dark orange, and R two on the north in a medium orange. The land use designations as seen on the right are high density on the south in medium orange and compact on the north in light orange, both of which allow the M X one zone. The proposed rezone is appropriate at the property as it is between two arterial roadways, state and main street, near bus routes and bikeways, near employment and commercial areas, and is located within three activity center areas. Additionally, this is a parcel that has been vacant for years, and the comprehensive plan encourages infill development to support existing infrastructure and to reduce vehicle miles traveled. The proposed townhomes would be two to three stories in height and up to thirty-five feet at the top of the parapet with rooftop pergolas and overruns. The existing zoning would allow for up to four-story structure, as does the M X one zoning, with a maximum height of forty-five feet. Neither of the existing nor proposed zoning has density limits. The M X one zone requires either a mix of uses or a minimum of two-story structures, both of which would be met by the proposal. Any proposed buildings would also be subject to further review. As proposed, the subdivision would have twenty-one residential, one commercial, and two common lots. All lots would meet the dimensional standards of the M X one zone. All vehicle access for the subdivision would be consolidated to the alleyway and common lot. Parking for the townhomes would be provided in one to two-car garages, whereas the minimum parking requirement for a single-family home is one space. Additionally, four surface parking spaces would be provided internal to the site for commercial and guest parking. There's also unrestricted street parking adjacent to the property. The applicant is planning to retain the existing detached sidewalk shown in yellow on the screen and add additional internal pathways shown in orange. Their existing street trees, which would mostly be maintained, and additional trees would be planted internal to the site and in the landscape buffer, meeting all mitigation requirements. The applicant has proposed a landscape amenity with a historic marker or public art along nineteenth street, and a condition of approval would require the public access easement over that amenity area. The applicant is requesting a variance to the ten-foot rear setback in the M X one zone. As designed, the applicant is proposing zero-foot rear setbacks. The unique project layout and shape of the overall property presents a hardship in that all vehicle access will be from the alley, but the project design will utilize the entire block with all structures fronting four sides, rather than the more traditional block layout as shown on the left. The triangle shape of the project area is relatively uncommon, and the proposed layout consolidates vehicle access for each home from the common lot internal to the site, reducing impacts to adjacent properties. The development code does not anticipate a cohesive project as proposed, where individual lots above a common lot providing vehicle access rather than each townhome taking direct access from the alley. The requirement for ten-foot setbacks would necessitate twenty-two separate access and maintenance agreements, and would create inconsistencies throughout the site as shown on the right. Public comment was received, which included both in the original project report as well as in the late correspondence memo. General concerns include the timing of the rezone in relation to the adoption of the zoning code and citywide rezone in twenty-twenty-three, the height and density of the project, parking design, and then the variance request. While there was a citywide rezone associated with the adoption of the current zoning code in December twenty-twenty-three, that reason was based on a citywide conversion logic that did not consider parcels on an individual basis. It was anticipated that the conversion logic would work as designed for the major majority of parcels throughout the city. However, rezoning of individual parcels based on specific circumstances was anticipated. As stated in the project report, the subject property is an undeveloped lot located within three activity centers near services and alternative transportation options. The proposed rezone is supported by the future land use map and will allow similar development to what is allowed by the current R two and R three zoning with smaller setbacks and lot sizes, as well as an additional commercial opportunities. As proposed, all parking requirements will be met, and the proposal will be subject to further review of the buildings in uses. Finally, the variance request is due to the oddly shaped parcels, consolidated vehicle access, and this type of development not being anticipated by the zoning code. In conclusion, the planning team recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, Ben? Come on up. You know the drill.
Good evening. Mr. Chair and members of the commission, Ben Semple with Rodney Evans and Partners, fourteen fifty West Bannock Street, Boise, Idaho, eight-three-seven-zero-six. You know, first and foremost, I want to just make sure that it's known we're in agreement with all the conditions of approval in the staff report, all the various agency comments that we've received, and I want to thank Jesse for her comprehensive analysis of the project as well as her presentation tonight. Just as a reminder, we are asking for a rezone of the parcels from R two and R three to M X one subdivision to establish twenty-two single-family resident, or sorry, twenty-one single-family residential lots and a single commercial retail lot anticipated for a neighborhood scaled residential, or sorry, neighborhood scaled commercial or retail user. And we are requesting the variance to the rear setback to keep parking access, landscape, and the primary areas of the common space on a common lot. We agree with the city staff's interpretation of the variance code that would allow for the variance here. The site is a very unique shape. We could put eight single-family homes on here. It wouldn't really do much to address housing in the area. This is a transitional area between the downtown core and kind of the west end, sort of where that grid shifts from the downtown grid to the west end grid. The townhomes will be, as you can see here, is a site plan. This was the site plan shown at the neighborhood meeting, just demonstrating the the unit shapes. The dark gray is the parking access areas. The white that cuts through the site is either the alley or public pedestrian pathways. And then the perimeter is landscaped, the northeast corner. Let's see if I can right here would be the commercial space. And then I have three renderings on on this, just to demonstrate the three separate renderings that we provided with the application. I've got a larger version of those. This elevation is the view right of the front of this building right here. This elevation would be from the corner here. This is the bodega right here, what we're calling the bodega lot right here, and then it goes down those units. And then this is the frontage along here, along the other part of Jefferson, just to get a little bit of orientation because they're sort of backwards, but I wanted to make sure that the site plan was facing north. Just another aerial photo. State Street is about eight hundred feet to the north. We've got Main Street. It's probably about sixteen hundred feet to the south. We've got Fairview Park that's eight hundred feet to the west, and then the downtown core again is pretty close as you move to the east. Just to highlight the future land use here, light yellow is the compact zone. The darker yellow is the high-density zone, and the pink is the mixed-use land use that's within this area. And then the current zoning that surrounds the project, the the red is M X three, the pink that's down along Main Street is M X one. Got R three, the dark orange, and R two, the kind of lighter orange. This demonstrates the, this is the mobility plan that was submitted. There's a main bus route along State Street as well as along Main Street. We actually have, there's, I think, four different routes that you that are accessible from this site. Primarily, the routes seven, eight, and forty on Main Street, and then you have Route nine on State Street. There's the Pleasanton Bike Way, the Bannock Street West Bike Way, and the Eighteenth Street Bike Way. I believe there's also another bike way in the immediate area that was not included. I think I have it written down here somewhere, but I'll try to find it. This is a landscape plan, a little bit more developed than the neighborhood meeting site plan that was shown. We are retaining all of the trees that are in the front planter strips along the streets, other than two that are currently either dead or in about half-dead. We're going to have an arborist take a look at those closer, but the remaining trees will remain and then we'll we'll supplement, as Jesse had stated. Get to the landscape part of it, sorry. We're adding nine street trees, both class two and class three, because the planter strip here is a little wider than the standard eight feet. And then we're installing twenty-seven class one and two trees combined on the site. That's independent of any evergreen trees to get placed on the site as well. The pathways and seating areas, like I said on the site, would be available to the public. I know in the staff report, it indicates that with the surrounding public sidewalks, the pathways through the site wouldn't have to have a public access easement, but they will not be gated or closed off in any way. And so the public would be able to use those routes if they felt more comfortable walking through the site versus on the sidewalk by the street. Again, this is just a larger version of the architectural plan. This is the concept plan that was put together by the developers architect. They're currently working through additional plans to refine these, the designs. Again, the bodega, it's anticipated to be a single-story with another kind of gathering space above it on the second floor. There would be an outdoor patio space that's associated with that, surrounded with a small wall to kind of define that space. We really wanted to leave that corner open. It's kind of a challenging intersection right there at Jefferson and nineteenth. We're going to be talking with A C H D about the potential of putting in two more stop signs so that we can make that a four-way stop, just to increase a little bit of traffic safety, some traffic calming. We are also requesting that on the corner, and it would fall right about here, on the corner that would be outside of the vision triangle, we're going to request a pro-wag ADA stall to be installed along the frontage on street parking that would be immediately adjacent to the retail commercial space. What that also does is it it kind of keeps that space open, increases some visibility through there, unless there's someone with an ADA vehicle that needs to park there. All other parking that is associated with the project is accommodated onsite through garage spaces as well as onsite parking. All of the townhomes have at least a one-size or one-car oversized garage. They're about eighteen feet wide. So if you had some smaller cars, you could fit two in there. You could fit a standard car and a motorcycle. You could fit a truck and a bunch of bikes in there if you want. We also have a bicycle storage structure, accessory structure on the site that would be on the common lot internal to the site that would allow for residents that have larger cargo bikes or something they didn't want to store in their garage, or guests that are there with bikes could also access that to store. I'm going to go back to the site plan. So the parking on the site is internal here. This small building in the middle would be the community building for bike parking. We may have a mailroom in there, too. Still working with USPS about how they'd like us to to put in a mailbox. We do have a common area space here along the frontage, and then the common area space down here would also accommodate a cluster mailbox. So if they want us to split it up and put half on the north and half on the south, we can do that as well. One of the other things that we've already talked with Solid Waste with the city about is providing consolidated trash service for this whole project. You know, having the number of units here, twenty-one units. If everyone had trash in a recycling cart and a compost cart, trash pickup day would kind of be a nightmare. And so in working with Solid Waste, we've determined that we can provide a trash enclosure with some larger dumpsters in it for use by not only the commercial space, but all residents of this project. We've also set aside a small space next to it for a commercial compost pickup. In speaking with Solid Waste, that is something that they're exploring for use in these situations. We will be talking to them because technically this would then qualify as a commercial trash service. We're going to work with them on timing of pickup because we don't want it to be the typical commercial times, which are like two, three, four in the morning. We want this to be a standard residential pickup time. We also anticipate probably multiple days of pickup on this, so continuing to work with them through that. The road frontages are all improved. We will be replacing curb gutter and sidewalk as necessary as determined by A C H D. We're also rebuilding the alley that cuts through the site here. It's currently about fourteen to sixteen feet wide, kind of paved, but not really. We'll be widening that to the full twenty feet and paving the full width of the alley. We're talking with Intermountain Gas. There's a kind of a gas facility. I think it's a blow-off or something like a pressure, something right here. It's a little tiny structure. They've indicated that it may not be necessary for their system anymore. And so we're working with them to remove that as well as bury as many power lines here as we possibly can, not only in the alley, but there's a power line that runs to a street light at the corner along here. There's a couple other ones that run around there. Anything that we can bury underground on the site, unless it's providing service across the street, we're going to try to make that happen. And we're also rebuilding the intersections of both of the alley intersections here. They're currently fairly small radii, if they have a radii at all. So we'll be building those out to A C H D standards. The other improvements that we're making is there is no water main that runs down twenty-first right now. There's a fire hydrant up here on this side, and then there's one down over here. The fire department has asked us to connect, and Violia has asked us to connect the main lines together and add another fire hydrant at the alley, and the my client has committed to doing that as well. I guess if I I can stand for questions or if you want me to go through some additional items, I think that's a lot of the the basis of the project. I know there's some concerns from the neighbors about parking and height. One of the things I want to reinforce, these are two and three-story. Yes, some of them or most of them may have rooftop decks, but they're not four-story. And the height of the R two and the R three zones currently would allow forty-five or fifty-foot-high buildings and a much higher density could be put in here if you did a surface or a podium parked multifamily project that would be allowed by right here. You could probably double or triple the number of units on this full site.
So we have the discretion to go to twenty minutes for you, as long as the neighborhood association is given the same amount of time. I'm going to ask you, do you need an extra minute to go over the material that you just suggested, or would you prefer to do that in rebuttal?
If I can have another five minutes, I think I can probably cover it.
We can go ahead and do that.
Great. So I, yeah, touching on the zoning and the heights. So again, R two zoning that's on the north side currently would allow a forty-five-foot height and four stories. The R three zoning on the south would allow up to four stories and a fifty-foot maximum height. The M X one, which is the requested zone, is a forty-five-foot height limit, which matches that R two zone, which is the lowest density zone that's surrounding this property. Everything else is either R two or R three around here. We do, there is a little bit more of a modern architectural style to these buildings currently as designed. But the the developer does want to use more traditional materials, wood and brick on these. He is planning to put residential lifts in these as well, which is why you see a little bit of an overrun on the roof systems on some of the the pergola and then this kind of what I call a doghouse. It's kind of an overrun for a stairwell and potentially residential lift. There will be an HOA with C C and ours that are developed on this to, you know, protect the design of this, make sure everything is very high-quality. My client, who's also the developer, he's a local. He's also a builder here in town. He actually intends to live in one of these units once it's all completed. He really loves this area of town and really wants to move into here. And, you know, if there's, I know there's some concerns about a precedent or if this would set a precedent for this to be redeveloped further in the future. If it's determined that to protect, you know, a redevelopment of the site, a development agreement could be entered into that would cap the number of units and really just add in some of the specifics of the application, we'd be open to that if that's what the city would like to see. That just helps protect some of the concerns about this being developed in a different way. That would require another public process to come back through a development agreement modification. I think I touched on most of the other stuff. You know, I wanted to highlight, you know, Jesse's presentation, we're within the radius of three activity centers. This is really an area that is encouraged to have a mix of housing types. There are single, two-family and multifamily uses all within, you know, quarter to half mile of this site. Some newer stuff that is a little bit taller. There are some newer homes that were built recently that are at least two stories. There are some that are a little further east on Jefferson that I believe one of them is a three-story multifamily as well. So we really feel this is going to be a high-quality project for the site, kind of redevelop this space that's fully surrounded by public roadways and utilities, and, you know, look forward to moving forward with the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you much. I'll be back to you in just a moment.
Great.
You'll go ahead and turn our attention to the Neighborhood Association and Justin Buckley or the West End Neighborhood Association representative? I have Justin Buckley, but if you are a designated person on behalf of the Neighborhood Association, we can accept that, so.
Okay.
Okay, before, go ahead.
Well, what's the name? Are you the development representative for the Neighborhood Association?
Yeah, I'm thinking, are you a representative for the Neighborhood Association?
At this time, we can only take testimony from the registered, from the appointed development person on the Neighborhood Association. So if that's not you, then unfortunately, this is not quite your time yet.
So let me, let me just real quickly explain this. So in the city of Boise, as many of you know, there are registered neighborhood associations. They are not HOAs. They are Neighborhood Association, and yours is the West End Neighborhood Association, of which they have a board structure who regularly comes here and testifies and participates and writes letters and all of that. So at this point in our zoning code, it's written that it goes, staff presents, applicant presents, Neighborhood Association then gets the equal amount of time as the applicant. And if the Neighborhood Association is not here or doesn't attend or participate, then what we'll do is we will pause. We're going to go to questions among the commission, and then we open it up to the public testimony. So everybody in this room will have an opportunity to give their three minutes to testify whether you've signed up or not. So we're going to get to that. So at this point, what I'm looking for is if there's a representative from the West End Neighborhood Association, and it does not look like there is either in chambers or online. So, okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and we'll open it up to questions among the commission. Commissioner Seha.
Um, yes, I have a question for Ben.
Sorry, I should have come right back up here.
So, um, you know, in, as you mentioned, and as Jesse mentioned, there's some concern about height, and I remember the most recent development to the east, I think it's between sixteenth and eighteenth, off Jefferson, maybe. I I know that there was some concerns about height and just the the mass. And so I'm just curious, if we go back to your presentation, one of the first slides, you showed the layout, but then you also showed kind of like the rendition of the and and even though an M X one would allow forty, forty, forty-five, Jesse did mention that this is looking at thirty-five, and so my question to you is thirty-five, is the thirty-five-foot height? The middle, the middle photo far left.
Here, I'll go, yeah, here, I'll.
So if you, what what's the height or what's the estimated height for the the flat left?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Seha, so this, the parapet wall or the top of the living conditioned space is thirty-five right here. So an overrun, you know, this could be eight to ten feet here, depending on, you know, what that final pergola design looks like. This is indicating, you know, one of them's towards the front, one of them's going to set further back. I will mention that this is that other end. We do have options where there's two-story. I will mention that this is that other end. We do have options where there's two story with the rooftop deck on top of that. So, you know, this, the top of this would be a thirty-five. So we're, we're very well within that maximum height that's allowed, whether it's MX one or R two. Um, which the north side is currently zoned. And we did do, we did try to break up the massing here a little bit. This shows a little bit clearer where we have a two unit building and then there's about ten feet in between a three unit building. Again, about ten feet in between three unit building, another little break just to try to break up the massing of the building along that facade as it moves down there.
Okay. Um, and then, thank you, Ben. I have a question for Jesse. So I realize that the development, the most recent multifamily development to the east is, I think that's R two.
Or R three.
Is it R? Oh yeah, it is. Okay. Um. So when we look at, I mean, cause I, I'm just thinking I, I'm stuck on height and even though even though the MX one would allow that forty-five, I'm just wondering if if the residents would be would be more comfortable with restricting that to thirty-five, right? And that's, that's what's being proposed here, but you know, when it actually gets built, it may be slightly different.
And Mister Chair and Commissioner Seha, just real quickly, I would state that, you know, the southern half of this site is R three that currently would allow a taller, um, you know, by right, right now. Um, and any of the other lots that are R two could be developed and, and request a taller uh, building as well.
Yeah, and I, and I recognize that. Yeah. So I was just curious, like the average height for a two-story structure is thirty, like a two-story home?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner, or sorry, Mister Chair, Commissioners. Um, the average height for a two-story home, uh, assuming like eight foot uh, ceilings would be, you know, twenty feet or above.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Depending on the roof style. Thank you.
Commissioner Moore.
All right, Mister Chair, to follow up on Commissioner Seha's kind of line of questioning. So if I'm reading, what is it, the subdivision, the preliminary plat correctly, I think I'm seeing as basically a seventy foot right of way for, which one is this one? This one's nineteenth street. A eighty foot right of way for Bannock. Oh my gosh, a forty foot or eighty foot right of way for twenty first and then a sixty foot right of way for Jefferson. Does that sound about right?
Mister Chair, Commissioner Moore, yeah, there, uh, there used to be, just as some background, Bannock Street used to have a rail line on it. Um, and so that was an exceptionally wide right of way. Um, there was a rail that ran to the west end. Yeah, so there, there's some wider right of ways along here. So quite a bit of separation plus the additional planter strip and the five foot sidewalk, which then were set back from the back of sidewalk. And with the mature trees, I anticipate a lot of separation between surrounding residents.
Um, Mister Chair.
Commissioner.
Just to follow up on that one. So wide right of ways are very wide right of ways. And then on top of that, um, I think I remember something in the, in the packet about like a what were, what was the street classifications? Do you know off the top of your head? They were pretty highly classified.
They're all locals.
They're all, they're all what?
Local streets.
Local streets. Oh, really? Okay.
Mister Chair, Commissioner Moore, I do believe that Bannock Street is classified as a neighborhood collector off the top of my head.
It's probably a mobility plan, maybe. I don't know if it's listed up on that mobility plan that you showed or not. It might not be. I don't think so. That sounds right, though.
Yeah, I remember one of them was a little bit more highly classified.
I think the A C H D report had classified them all as locals.
Yeah, I can double check on that.
It's all good for now.
That's your questions? Mister Chair? Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Torres.
Um, my question is for Ben. Um, I know this is just the preliminary plat. Um, but do you know roughly what these townhomes were, are projected to go for? Is it market rate? Is there any affordable units that are planned for this? I didn't see anything in the staff report, but I figured I could be a chance to answer that.
Mister Chair, Commissioner Torres, yeah, we, there's no plans to make anything affordable. Um, per any, you know, A M I guidelines, um, these will be market rate. I mean, it's a pretty highly desirable area of town. Um, a new build, depending on what the market dictates at the time, would what they be sold for.
Mister Chairman, another question for, this time for staff. Um, Jesse, it says in the staff report and um, that this uh, development is actually exceeds the required parking for, for the location. Is that correct?
Uh, Mister Chair, Commissioner Torres, uh, yes, so each single family home is required to provide one vehicle parking space. And the proposed townhomes would provide one or two.
Um, I have a follow-up question for Ben. Um, so I'm sure as you know, because you're in this industry, the cost of parking adds significant cost to the cost of, of building housing uh, or really building anything. Um, obviously these are garages and they're going to be under the units, so it's not going to be like a separate, you know, separate stalls like you would have elsewhere in the city. Um, has there been any consideration just to doing? A, and I should back up. I know that a lot of the people who submitted written testimony are concerned about there not being enough parking, but based on the location of this, this project, um, has there been any thought to just doing single garages? You know, this is located near downtown, on the edge of downtown essentially. You know, you, these, these uh, units might be appealing to people who want to live and work downtown and don't necessarily want a car, you know, a full car life. They, or they want to be car light. Has there been any thought along, along those lines to help bring the cost down as well?
Uh, Mister Chair, Commissioner Torres, you know, some of the units are kind of like a eighteen foot width on them. So it's a little bit smaller of what I would consider to be a two-car garage. It's more of a one to one and a half car garage. Um, those are smaller units as well. So I think that just by the sheer fact of the square footage, um, the cost will be a little bit lower. Um, I don't, again, I wouldn't term them affordable. Um, but we kind of looked at that, which we could have done less units and more parking. Um, and felt like this, what we've landed on was the appropriate mix that would allow for people that don't want to own cars or that are more uh, bike and alternative transportation users that want to work and live downtown.
So Toyota Corolla is not uh, Ford F three fifties.
Right, yes.
Mister Chair.
Mister Moore.
I've got one more question. Um, so for single family detached town hall or attached town home does not require the covered secured bike parking. Is that correct, Jesse?
Mister Chair Commissioners, that's correct. No single family home requires any specific dedicated bike parking.
Okay, but the commercial does and it's probably only like two spaces or something like that.
Um, Mister Chair Commissioners, uh, yes, so I think off the top of my head, it would be two spaces uh, based off the thousand square foot uh, commercial space uh, long-term and then uh, short-term as well.
So any bike parking that they're providing in this kind of little, what is it called? The secured bike parking area, that's in excess of the code then at that point, unless it's needed for the commercial space, I would assume.
Mister Chair Commissioners, that's correct.
Okay. And then Ben, do you know about how many spaces you're planning on providing in that?
Mister Chair Commissioner Moore, we haven't really gotten into the design of that building yet or that structure to see how many different cargo bike versus e-bike versus vertical hung. You know, we're going to look at a mix. We want to try to get as many as possible. We anticipate that the residents here that are probably very similar to the residents of this area already are going to want to bike to the river and they're going to want to bike to downtown. And so we want to provide enough room for them and not have the garages just be where that stuff is stored and then the cars end up on the street. So, you know, see it a lot in subdivisions, people's garages turn into storage units and their cars don't live in them. So that's where we want to try to avoid that.
Gotcha. Awesome. Well, thank you. And then um, Jesse is the next stop for this. Does this go to design review commission? It's a hearing level?
Uh, Mister Chair Commissioners, this would be administrative. Um, a hearing level would be for over fifty units.
Gotcha. Give.
Any other questions?
So.
Mister Seha.
Um, so just to clarify, Jesse, because I know that I think it was a, the letter that Ben uh, submitted as part of our packet. It speaks to design review, but didn't, I don't recall it being administrative um, design review. So um, with administrative design review, that means there's no opportunity for public comment, right? That's just done internally.
Mister Chair Commissioners, uh, administrative design review, does it be available to see when it's going through that process on the development tracker? Um, and then anybody who's interested at that point could get in contact with the planner. Uh, however, it doesn't have a public hearing and then uh, notice would be mailed after an approval or denial.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, if I could add one thing real quick.
Go ahead.
Sorry, um, the current zoning R two and R three would allow a staff level design review of a, a much more dense multifamily project as well. So just as a reference point.
Okay, uh, so Jesse, we don't have a, a, a development app or a um, DA development agreement. There it is. Um, but it sounds like the applicant is willing, especially if it uh, allows the general public who we've received lots of comments from have their concerns about making certain that the heights don't go any further than what is proposed and then the certainty of some of the other specifics within the application. So I guess I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that, but I'm curious why we don't have a development agreement with a rezone. What was the thought process that remind me? I'm sure it's a new code detail that I missed, I'm sure.
Mister Chair Commissioners, um, a development agreement is something that would be uh, submitted at the time of application by the applicant um, or city requested at that point of application. Um, if the rezone doesn't meet the findings for um, approval, then the planning and zoning commission could add a development agreement at that time.
To, to be clear, though, that you would all have to find that it does not meet the findings and then use that to fix it.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. Okay, um, another question, I, I think I know the answer, but I think it's important that it gets out here and that is we've had uh, in some of the letters, sort of a declaration that this is spot zoning because of, this just was subject to a rezone R two, R three. Um, and then it's being requested to go and change yet again to MX one. So I think I know the answer to this, but from staff, I, I, or from the applicant, why is this not spot zoning?
Mister Chair Commissioners, so there was a citywide rezone with the adoption of this code in December of twenty twenty-three. And that was based on the citywide conversion logic. And that had specific sets of rules that applied citywide and they looked at similarity to previous zoning, proximity to best-in-class transit routes and activity centers. Uh, the location uh, within specific planning sub districts and natural divisions such as streets and alleys. Uh, however, this did not consider parcels on a case-by-case basis. So with that conversion logic, we did anticipate some rezones based on specific parcel qualities and locations since the adoption of that zoning code.
Okay, you need to add on that? I don't have to.
I, I mean, the Mister Chair, Commissioner, my understanding is these two areas were R two and R three previous to the zoning code rewrite. I think it just removed the design review overlay that was on there. Um, even though design review, this is still subject to design review um, because of the project being proposed. So um, we, when we approached the city, we are looking for a way to um, provide a unique development on this site. Um, and it was supported by staff and they said, you know, based on your proposal, this is the direction that they said we could go that was supported by the comprehensive plan and the city code sections applicable to MX one and the compact and high-density land uses.
Okay, very good. Um, on-street parking permitted on Jefferson. Yes, no?
All four sides.
All four sides. So your entire perimeter is permitted for on-street parking, okay? The bodega, is this an idea or do you have an actual potential here?
Mister Chair, we've, I've reached out to both the local operators, been trying to get in touch with them. One of them I talked to said that they thought my email was a spam email because I was asking them if they wanted a business opportunity. Um, so.
You weren't from Nigeria.
Right, yeah. So I'm still trying to make that connection, but we're pretty positive that we can find a local operator, whether it's a bodega or a small shop of some kind. You know, we want to find a neighborhood scaled user here that will provide something. I know that there are some stores in the general area. Primarily you have to cross State Street or Twenty-seventh. I know there are some on Main Street that you can get to without crossing major streets. But it feels like this would be an appropriate spot for somewhere where you could go pick up a loaf of bread or a gallon of milk. Um, we're going to do everything we can to find an operator for something along those lines. Um, and if it has to change to a different retail space or different commercial user, um, well, that is being evaluated with a further application. Once we have a user to make sure that we're meeting all the provisions of code at that point for parking and accessibility and, and all, all that we need to hit.
Okay, very good. Any other questions?
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Torres.
Uh, my question is for Jesse. Um, so I want to go back to something that Ben said earlier about how more um, density is allowed in the current zone. Um, obviously the zoning code is very long and very complex, but can you just briefly um, explain, I think it would be helpful for the, for the public to hear what is allowed in R two, R three and MX one, so they can kind of see what the comparison is, what we're looking at here.
Um, Mister Chair Commissioners, so I did actually put together a chart, um, kind of in anticipation of having some of these discussions. And the R two and R three zone, as you can see, the height is still the four stories, not to exceed forty-five or not to exceed fifty feet. And all three zones do not have any density limits. Um, and the way that density uh, is anticipated in these areas is to be limited by things like lot size, um, height restrictions, uh, any kind of required neighborhood transition standards and some of these other items that naturally limit density rather than putting a number on it.
All right, any other last questions? Going once, going twice?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to pause this for five minutes. Bathroom break, all that kind of stuff, and then we'll get back into the public hearing. And so uh, we'll start off with those who signed up. And if you haven't signed up, don't worry, we'll make sure to have everybody uh, getting opportunities. So let's break for about five minutes. Okay, are we ready to rock? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring everything back in session. Um, a couple of things, just as a quick heads up, as a reminder to the commission, we have, we are, there's a citing body for the variants and recommending for the other two. And then for the general public, um, when you come up, I'll call a few names at a time just so we can kind of keep things going on this lovely Monday evening. Um, you each will have three minutes, so please start off with your name, address, and then jump into your three minutes. Um, also, as we get going, again, as a reminder, once I get through this list, I'll then make sure to have anybody who wants to just simply raise their hand, who has not already spoken, will have the opportunity to come up. Um, but if you start hearing some of the thing that you were going to say and you feel like I don't need to, to add on, don't feel like you have to, it's okay. Um, but just uh, as a heads up there. So with that, we're going to go ahead and jump into this. Uh, first few folks are number one, Scott Tagg, followed by Janet Beckley, I think it's Beckley, and then Sarah Colston.
Mister Chair, committee members, committee members. Uh, Scott Tagg, T A G G, eighteen twenty, West Jefferson Street, Boise, eight three seven oh two. I have lived across the street from this project for the past twenty-six years. And from the day I moved in, I knew that something was going to go on that lot. I've seen a lot, seen the Salvation Army Church, I've seen a community garden for refugees. It was the first home of the Boise Urban Garden School for two years. And like I said, I've always known something's going to be there. I've always said it would be neighborhood appropriate. Okay? Okay, well, tonight you're gonna hear from my neighbors behind me, what their versions of neighborhood appropriate are. Okay, so at one time, twenty-five years ago, a six-story forty-eight-unit apartment building was proposed. And again, I don't think that's neighborhood appropriate. It actually led to the creation of the West Downtown Neighbor Association. So there was a some benefit there. Um, would I like to see something smaller? Well, sure. But again, the economic realities just don't pencil out, and I understand that. Okay, so again, I've seen a lot of different things. I've seen a lot of different proposals. We went to the city over twenty years ago to try to get Parks and Recs to buy the property. And we're told, well, it's too close to Fairview Park, and it was too small. They only wanted to buy properties less than five acres. Okay, so again, I've known something's always gonna be there. I would like to be neighborhood appropriate. What that is, you're gonna figure that out tonight. But of all the plans I've seen so far, I support this program, this project, because I look forward to welcoming these new residents to my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out. Okay, Janet Beckley, Sarah Colson, and then Eric Jorgensen.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, um, uh, Janet Beckley, and my address is two one oh two West Jefferson, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven oh two. And my only, um, I guess we've always known that something's gonna go into the lot as well. Um, but the thing is, is the variance, um, Jefferson is a very thin street, and so with zero variance in the front, the building coming straight up to the city. This is also a bike. Nobody ever talked about how it's a bike corridor. So um, we do get a lot of bike traffic, everybody off of state, and I agree with your idea of this being like a a a um, whatever, why is this one block? We have State Street that's mixed use. We have lots of mixed use. We've got Albertsons, we've got grocery stores, we've got at coffee shops, we've got everything very close to us, all of downtown. And again, people can ride their bikes and stuff. So the concern is the um, the lack of variance, the height, and that um, people just uh, parking with that. Uh, we're solving the parking problem. That's not an issue. But um, compact, anyways, keep it compact, but maybe a little setback, the setbacks in the front and the back, people having space, I think that's important. That's all.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming out. Appreciate it. Okay, Sarah Colson, Eric Jorgensen, and then Lynn, I think it's Kosowitz.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sarah Colson, twenty-one oh two West Madison Ave. Um, I think really what we're all asking is, do the same rules apply to everyone? This place, this whole neighborhood was just recently rezoned very reasonably, very prudently. And why are we now asking for an exception for one big money developer? Like, I think we're fighting this on a lot of levels. But why, why are we asking for an exception here? The rules are valid, the rules are something we all live by. We're just asking for a very reasonable abiding of those rules, a ten-foot setback so that cars can pull out. Jefferson is literally basically a one-way street right now because the cars park on both sides. Many bikes use it. I don't even know how fire trucks even get down it to try and add twenty-one more houses. We know they're gonna fill their garage with crap parked on the street. That's probably fifty more cars is wildly insane. The zoning laws that are in place are very reasonable. This seems like a case of one developer looking to make a really big money grab on this very small lot. Most of the blocks are five to six houses. This is a very small block. It would probably only fit like three to four normal-sized houses. To go to four feet is or four stories is so intrusive for the neighbors that live across the street are good friends. They will lose all privacy in their kitchens, in their bedrooms, in their backyards. To have someone on a four-foot rooftop deck always looking directly into their homes is very intrusive. Um, we're asking for more green space, traditional architect, the setback's consistent with the rest of the neighborhood and current zoning laws. And I think it's not just about the zoning, it's about some compassion and common sense and keeping a really nice neighborhood nice and just being a good fellow human. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Colson. Appreciate it. Okay, Eric Jorgensen, followed by Lynn Kosowitz, and then Christian Mansfield. So Eric, you're you're Eric? Okay, great. So you must be Lynn.
I'm Lynn.
Hi, Lynn.
Passakes, uh, twenty-one twelve West Jefferson, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven oh two. Um, so yeah, thank you for your attention tonight. I appreciate listening to the the neighbors. Um, I'm, I think people have covered most of my concerns, um, and I just had one additional one after listening tonight, and that's about the commercial space. And if it's a bodega, I guess that this three, what I read in the staff report about the need for um, parking, if it's something like a bodega, is maybe three spots, and that would be covered. I can't imagine, though, that customers are gonna come down and through this alley and around and buy the bike thing and over to get their parking to run into the bodega. So I imagine it's gonna be um, a lot of street parking. And I think as neighbors, it's tight in the on the street parking in that neighborhood. So I'm concerned about that, or if the garages get full and the people want to park on the street. And I think so those, as I heard more about those, I wasn't as concerned about the parking till I hear about that. And if it if a bodega gets, it doesn't go, and we're looking at other commercial space, how does that get fixed? The adding the ten, I think the staff report said a coffee shop needs ten dedicated parking spaces, and it just doesn't look like it's gonna fit if the, especially if the um, they get the variance for the rear the rear setbacks. So I I don't know, and I don't know how it works when you have a commercial space and you have a homeowners association, so the developers are done. And the homeowners, I guess, own the place, and I don't know who owns the commercial space or how that works. And if one person goes out of business and that commercial space is there, how that happens and what happens with the parking if it all changes. So I'm interested in hearing maybe from the um, the applicants about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out. Okay, um, Christian Mansfield, followed by Robert Mata. Thanks, I never get it right, so I appreciate that. Hello.
Hello, my name is Christian Mansfield. I have never done public speaking before, so this is a bit nerve-wracking. Um, I live on nineteen zero five West State Street. I am something of an amateur ecologist. I don't know that much, but I try to learn whenever I can. And I I jog around this block every, about every morning. Every time it just makes me a bit sad because it's it's very neglected. It's full of puncture weed and skeleton weed, and I think at one point there were some tree of heaven, but they seem to have been removed. And while it is a bit of a dry, dead space right now, it is still an ecosystem. And I find that replacing everything with this development would smother significantly. It needs more green space. It needs compost areas, it needs gardens, and I I really feel like some gardeners, maybe a professional on the development team to sort of sequester some of the lots out as sort of wild area, because if you want to be carbon neutral by twenty fifty, like the big banner ad on the front of the building says, I really think that having a mixed-nature-human coexistence is important to make that happen. I've I've done my own personal rewilding projects before, and I have seen species of insect and other arthropods that I have never seen in Boise before. I I've seen tiger crane flies, I've seen banded garden spiders. I have seen millipedes and all sorts of things. And that's, that's a good sign because it means that there's things that live there, things that eat the things that live there, and that can support a food chain. And looking at the render, that was that was shown, I find it significantly lacking. There's not enough space between the street and the start of the houses for any sort of garden or whatever. I do feel like maybe the top of the building could be reserved for such purposes. And hmm, I think that's about it, all that I have to say. I I'm I'm just some guy. I have no real influence here, but I still felt like my concerns needed to be voiced.
Great. Good, Christian. Great job. It's unnerving. Thanks for being out here tonight, though. Robert Mata.
It's like I need a step stool.
It's all good.
All right, Robert Mata, I live at twenty-two twenty West Madison Avenue. Um, I think there have been some great points made already. So to recap on just a couple of things here. Earlier, we were talking about, or you guys were talking about converting this to an MX one zone and talk about the heights, and the young lady was mentioning the average two-story house, eight-foot ceilings, maybe twenty feet tall. But that's not where people are standing. That's the pitch of the roof, right? We're talking thirty-five feet where they're standing, looking into the houses, as Sarah was speaking about earlier. That's pretty unnerving for the people that are local. Um, there are MX zones in the neighborhood. But if you look at those houses, the reason, my wife and I have been here for seven years in that neighborhood. We bought because it was a incredible little neighborhood, small homes, gave us the feeling of where we came from. The MX buildings are in there. They are more characteristic to the neighborhood that is built around it. Right? Or that they were built into. No offense to the architect, but to me, these look like PONEX boxes. Um, they're very modern, and they just don't fit the neighborhood. You know, I I don't have a anything against people moving in. I just think it should fit the neighborhood. I wouldn't want to see this on Harrison Street. I wouldn't want to see it down in High Park. It just doesn't fit.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the traffic congestion, the business is gonna bring more people, the parking, Jefferson is a very small street. Um, the picture that was taken uh, was awesome. It showed two cars. That must have been in the middle of the day while everybody's working. Because at night, there are cars parked both sides of the street, and it is extremely narrow. That is a horrible situation. Um, strain on infrastructure. On my street, when it rains, I already have a river in front of my street because the sewer systems are old. They don't work. Right? All that needs to be fixed. And now you got more people, more water, more flushing, more situations. It's just not a good situation. Um, the the light, the immense of all of that building, you you're putting a bodega in there possibly. And then what happens if that fills? Then you got empty buildings sitting down below not being used. It just brings more of an eyesore to the community. The rising property taxes. A lot of people, my old neighbor, she bought her house many years ago. She paid like fifteen thousand dollars for that house. Her income was around two thousand dollars a month, maybe less. Property taxes are gonna be going up. There's a lot of people that can't afford that. People that have been in those neighborhoods and those homes for many, many years. And you're taking a chance of forcing a lot of people out of homes. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming out. Appreciate it. Okay, so in terms of the actual physical signup, that is all the, that's who has actually signed up. So now we will go to uh, anybody who's in chambers who wishes to testify. You're welcome to do so. You can come up one at a time, and we'll take your same thing, name, address, and you'll have the same three minutes. And then I know there are also a few people online, and we'll get to you uh, when we're done with the folks in the chamber. So hold tight. Go ahead, come on up.
Hi.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Laney. I live at two six zero four West Bannock Street. Um, to begin, I understand the city's desire for increased housing density. I get it. It's an enviable neighborhood. People want to live there. You want people to be near areas like State Street and Fairview Park and whatnot. That makes sense. Um, a big takeaway for me, as I've continued to learn more about this, is that while it's MX one or R two or R three that currently allow for what seems to be just exceptionally high buildings, it's it's difficult to apply such blanket codes across a whole city, but I guess that's the reason for hearings and meetings like this. Um, I think it's important that the vast majority of these homes, it is noted that probably about ninety percent of the homes in this neighborhood are single-story. I think no one would argue with the term quaint being really applicable. Um, so while the code allows it by right, as we heard many times, I think it's it's simply important to be reminded that it is exceptionally incongruent with the neighborhood, like a a two-story home in this neighborhood, I think is considered pretty large. So I think a reasonable middle ground would be a two-story development without the rooftop living that, call it a story or not, call it interior or exterior living, it it still adds height. And respecting the current setbacks would allow for the city to meet their desire for more dense housing, but but something that fits in with the neighborhood and probably results in just a more copacetic situation. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming out, Scott. Appreciate it. All right, anybody else in chambers wish to testify? Come on up. All right, welcome.
My name is Jenny McTaggart, and I live at twenty-one oh six West Jefferson Street, and I've lived there for a little over seventeen years, and um, like many of many of us have said that you know, I'm not opposed to development, that I know something's going to come, and I support that. I do not support the the rezoning of the MX one from the R two to R three because um, with the MX one, you're removing all setbacks that the R two and R three will provide those setbacks and protect our neighborhood and the the aesthetics of it and the that feel of it. And um, also, I do not support having a commercial um, um, space that, as we've all said, that we live so close to so many different commercial outlets that it's not necessary. We have Albertsons, we have abundant coffee shops in the neighborhood. And so we don't need a bodega when we can go to Albertsons like four blocks away. And they actually chose, out of all the intersections, they chose the worst one to put it on. That's where the grid shifts. They put it on Jefferson Street. It's already dangerous. You know, if you're crossing the street there or you're driving because it's blind, it's a blind um, turn. And to then, once it's built out and have a commercial space there, it'll become even more dangerous for cyclists, motorists, and pedestrians. And that's just something to be aware of, that sometimes you wouldn't realize that if you don't live in the neighborhood and experience on a day-to-day base, day-to-day basis. And um, also, I am um, opposed to the variance that, just as we've said, that the developer has not um, proven that they have hardship. They own a entire city block. That is not a hardship. Also, um, staff remarked that the unique project layout and shape of the property present a hardship. The proposed project layout cannot be considered a justification as a variant, um, as a justification for a variance. And the shape of the block is actually not unique um, to this area. If you look at the area, and there are six other city blocks within a four-block radius of this site that have a triangular-shaped lot. And so it's not, it's not unique. That's, that's our neighborhood. And so just as I was saying before, I support development. But you do need to hold to the code, and you do need to respect the R two and R three to protect our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, no, can't have that, sorry. All right, anybody else want to come up and testify? You're welcome to do so now.
I've received a letter from my son, Troy Mackey.
Uh, we've gotten lots of correspondence. We had a late correspondence, but there is a cutoff time, so.
No, he he sent it on Wednesday.
Uh, then if it was, oh, then we would have received it probably in our late, which comes on Fridays, so we would have seen that.
So you've got it?
Yes, yeah, we always get a late item on Friday afternoon that kind of is the.
So I just want to mention again.
Wait, 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 wait. So you've already. Wait, 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 wait. So you've already testified, right?
No.
I'm sorry, I thought you did. Okay, are you testifying now?
Yes.
Okay, then go ahead. My apologies. If you can start with your name and address.
But I, okay, what I want to say about the MX one, really, I think he wants it so it can do the zero setbacks right up in front of everybody's front yard. That's what I think he wants. And the thing with the bodega is, there's a Starbucks uh a block away. There are Albertsons with the Starbucks in it a block away. There's a marketplace shopping center with six restaurants, a liquor store, a Verizon store, a computer repair, a dry cleaner, UPS, two nail shops, a small gym, two clothing stores, a spa, a massage studio, three hair salons, a bank, there's the Dutch Brothers two blocks away, and there's the West Side Drive-Ins right around the corner. If he puts a retail space in there, it's probably not going to make it. It just, there's a lot of retail, very, very close. So the MX one makes, makes no sense.
Okay, can you real quick restate your name and, and address for the record?
Gail Mackey.
Thank you.
Uh, my son's house is nineteen-ten West Jefferson. He would be right in front of it, looking right at it.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else? If you're wanting to testify after this young lady, we'd love to have you come on up so we can kind of keep things moving. Hi.
Hi, Margie Twitchell, two-one-zero-seven West Jefferson Street. Um, as zoning is on the location now, the it has the density the city wants without rezone to MX one. The design layout could be changed to fit the site. Also with rezoning to MX one, there would be no setback requirements in the front and the side units. The setbacks are needed to, to keep the look and the feel of the neighborhood. The triangular shape of the lot does not present a hardship. There are several other triangle lots in the area. Woodlawn in North Twenty-second and Pleasanton. And then Pleasanton and West State Street, example of a couple. The design of the townhomes could be changed to meet the shape of the lot. The proposed bodega and coffee shop would add more vehicle traffic to a narrow section of West Jefferson. There's no need for a bodega, coffee shop in an area that already has several coffee shops, pastry shops, brew pubs and grocery stores. In a one-mile radius from this location, there are close to twenty coffee shops already. Having a commercial business on the corner would just add more vehicle traffic to a neighborhood with narrow streets. West Jefferson makes a curve at nineteenth and with vehicles parked on both sides of West Jefferson, there's a blind spot coming around the corner. And, and with a person driving cannot always see oncoming cars, cyclists, scooters or pedestrians. The corner is hazardous. The rezone to mixed use is not appropriate for this neighborhood. It is not a main thoroughfare like Twenty-seventh State, Fairview or Main Street. Not everyone will be walking, riding a bike or using a scooter to go to the bodega or coffee shop. We've lived in this, in our home for forty-nine years and have enjoyed living in the area. We are not against something being built at this location, but we just do not feel that the present design fits the existing style of the neighborhood. And the addition of commercial space would add too much more um traffic and be hazardous to kids walking, scooter riders and cyclists. The area is not appropriate for a business. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much for coming out. All right, anybody else in chambers who wishes to testify? Oh, a couple more. You can come up if you'd like and just have.
I just want to make a comment. I'm Melissa Brown. I live at nineteen-oh-six West Jefferson, right across the street. Um, I'm Crystal in Wendell's mom, if anybody, two dogs that are always in the yard that bark at everybody. Um, I used to live in Denver at one-two-three-four Columbine and I couldn't even park in front of my own house because of parking and Jefferson is already, I'm the only person on Jefferson that has dedicated parking behind my house. Everyone else parks in front. And as everyone has said, it is rather narrow and there's a real the street right at nineteenth really cuts a, a, a corner there. And I think it is going to be a huge issue. And to think that people that are going to buy million-dollar townhomes are only going to have one car. I'm not sure how realistic that is. I mean, I know the younger generation does bike a lot, but um let's be honest, if you can afford a million-dollar townhome, you're probably going to have two vehicles. So I'm just saying that as it stands now, all of, everyone that lives down the street from me doesn't have, they, they have to park out front and most of them do have one to two cars. So it, it's going to be an issue. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, come on up.
Hi, thank you. I'm Heidi Smith. I live at twenty-one oh five Madison Avenue. I just, I have three kids and they all bike and they all have cars because that's realistic. And Jefferson, if you drive down it, you actually have to let people go. You have to pull over. It is a one-way on Jefferson right now. If you go drive it, I've watched my kids. If you've got these three, four-story and it's right there, even if the kid has to get out of the way, where are they going to go? There's nowhere to go. It's literally a one-way. You have to pull over, let someone go through and then you can continue. If you just go drive it, you will see. I worry for my three kids because they bike all over Boise. The garage sizes on this, on his plan, there is no two cars. That's hilarious. If you pull in and you need to get out of your car, then you're not going to be able to do that if there's two cars in there. And come on, we have winters. People don't drive mopeds and bikes in the winter in Boise. That's how it is. So really, I just want safety for my kids in that area and I want some privacy considered for all the small homes around it. I think the commercial space is just selfishness and I, it makes no sense. We're a neighborhood and we just want to be safe and we want our privacy for all those homes around it. Everyone will be looking right down over them four stories up. It makes no sense. We need to do something about safety. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out. Okay. I'm going to go to the folks online and if there's anybody in chambers who has not testified that wishes, I'll give you a chance in just a moment. Um, I have two people online. One has their hand raised, but not a name associated. But it is a phone number and I'd rather not give that phone number out online, uh into the chambers. I'll just say it ends in zero-eight. How about that? If your phone number and you're online, which is only one of two people and ends in O eight, come forth now.
Mr. Chair, they have permission to talk. Oh, there we go.
Oh.
Yes, sir. I am here.
Hi, if you could just start with your name and address, we'll give you three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, my name is Trish Webb. I live at nineteen-twelve West Jefferson. Uh, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the council for hearing me out. I'm sorry that I couldn't attend today. I'm sick and I'm not feeling well. Um, so I thought I would, uh, but I'd like to thank my neighbors for showing up. Um, my wife and I have lived here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, my wife and I have lived here for thirty years. And I just want everybody on the council to realize that the houses that that are in this neighborhood are, you know, uh, built in the late nineteen twenties. And none of us have garages. We have zero parking. All of us park in front of our houses. And so when he's talking about a one, you know, one-car garage, people are going to come visit. We all know that. People come visit our homes. And I'm not unrealistic, sir, that we knew that something was going to be built here. I just want him to take a good look at the neighborhood. The offset from the sidewalk is unrealistic. There's no grass. There's nothing. It's right up against the sidewalk. Everybody that has testified is right. When you drive down Jefferson, it's basically a one-way street. I have seen so many wrecks. And so many of us have lost our mirrors and had our cars wrecked by just people driving down Jefferson. I've actually had to jump in my car because somebody was driving too fast. So my biggest concern is the heights of the building. Because I do have a loft, I have a two-story house. It's going to be facing right into that building. And they are going to be looking right into my house. There's no grass in front of this property. There's, they are keeping the trees. I understand that. But there's going to be a sidewalk and then basically their doorway, which I feel it's, it's unnerving. It does not match a historic district, which is what we're in, even though it has not been classified that way, but it is coming our way. I do agree with people that have spoken that has said that we don't need retail. There's a, they built a new retail right across where they built a new building. They have Hales Buildings, which has uh retail. We have everything that we need and retail brings more parking problems. And it, I have nowhere else to park but in front of my house. And these are my biggest, excuse me, my biggest concerns, council, about thinking about putting something like this in the middle of a neighborhood. But would something like this be allowed in Hyde Park? Would, I know this is an empty lot. I've seen it go from a community garden. Uh, when they took the church out, it was, you know, it's been big and empty for a long time.
Okay.
Is it time? Thank you. Thank you for your time, sir. I appreciate it.
Hope you feel better. Okay. Uh, I only have one more person online, but that person's hand is not raised in the chat. Um, so if there's anybody else in the chambers who wishes to testify, who has not already done so, now is the time to do so. Anybody else?
Uh, Shay Johnson, I'm at twenty-one oh one West Jefferson. And I just wanted to bring up that um everybody is talking about parking and things like that, but what with this kind of density, how long would the construction crews be taking up that area? Um, because at some point in time, I don't know what size of cranes or anything to build that high. But um I don't think the infrastructure is there just to allow the construction of twenty-one properties for that long. That's going to take a long time. And we don't have anywhere to go right now, as well as if there's no grass. I know that I pick up a lot of animal feces in my, in my yard. And so I feel like all of those, any member that, or anybody that lives there, any homeowner is going to be utilizing the yards and the areas around them um kind of at the disposal for them. So I just wanted to bring up things like that as even short-term, how long are we going to have to deal with that kind of congestion for twenty-one properties?
It's not Melissa's dogs, right? Leaving.
All in my yard.
Just making sure, just making sure. Okay, looks like we have a couple more people. Go ahead. Come on up. You can come on up if you'd like to sit there. Hello?
Hello, my name is Julia Rec.
Sorry, can you say that one more time?
Julia Rec, R-E-C-H. I live at uh nineteen-oh-three West Idaho Street. Um, I think it's important to know that development is inevitable, especially in a town like Boise. Change is coming. We, it's something that we have to live with. I think if it's done responsibly, it it can be done in a way that's not super impactful to existing neighborhoods and families and communities that are already in place. Um, I think ultimately a change to the zoning. I, I'm opposed to that for every other reason that people have stated already. I think the setbacks are going to be a huge problem um for privacy. I think um the whole Jefferson Street thing is very real. It's a very narrow street. Um, thinking about what the woman that spoke before me said with uh construction. It's going to be so messy. It's so tight. It's going to be a real burden on people that live in and around that area. Um, just for some levity, the uh commercial building, I don't need ice cream access closer to my house. So um maybe that's more of a personal problem. Um, I'm also curious on that note, just to think about how the Vervane space is doing. That's the commercial place that's in the Travis, this newer development close by. I don't see a lot of traffic going to that place. So just in terms of um, is that business going to be successful in that location? I don't know. Um, just my last point would be that I'm concerned that any final plans don't need another public hearing to be approved because of the it's like just under the threshold. So um I already, no, no offense. I do think it looks a little like an oil refinery. I'm from Texas and I'm getting uh flashbacks to like the Gulf Coast. So if we could maybe have the opportunity to look at the design one more time before something is potentially finalized, I think just good faith, that would be good for the community. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. And just a point of clarity. Um, there are two of the three portions of this application will require another hearing. That would be in front of council, whatever we do. The rezone and the preliminary plat. So just for point of order, just so that you all know, that's that's the, that's the process that's codified within the city code. Hi, come on up.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Breton Turner. I live at nineteen-sixteen West Jefferson Street. Um, and I just want to put in a plug for more affordable housing. We already have so many of these structures that are going in all around our part of the city. Um, and they're not affordable for a lot of families to live in. And so I do worry that it would end up having people buy them and use them for Airbnbs, which is not solving our city's housing crisis.
Okay, thank you. Come on up. No, no need to apologize.
Say something, huh? Uh, my name is Anna Demetriades. I live at two-six-zero-four West Bannock Street. Um, I agree with everything that's been said here tonight. I just want to add that the more I listen to all of this, the more clear it becomes to me that the only reason that this developer is asking for a mixed-use uh um rezoning for this area is, is so that he can remove those setbacks that would be part of R two or R three. So like the bodega, he doesn't care about that. Like, there's no reason to actually put that in. He just wants zero setbacks and this is the way to do it. So that to me feels really um dishonest and not in keeping with what we have in our neighborhood. And again, like my house is eighteen-hundred square feet. It's a single-level house. Most of the houses around me are about that same size, if not smaller. So this is a huge change for all of us. Um, I just want that to be really, really deeply considered.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else? We've gotten most everybody in here. Okay, anybody else online? Seeing nobody online, one last chance for anybody in the chambers. Here it is. Oh, nope, the phone number came up again, but we've already had that person testify. So, um Trish, yes, thank you. Trish, appreciate your ambition to try to testify again, but we can only uh take one crack at it.
Mr. Chair, might we just check to see if there's another person in her household that might want to testify?
That's a great point. Thank you very much, Crystal. Trish, I'll come back to you. Is there someone else in your household who would like to testify? Thanks, Crystal.
Thank you again, council, for hearing me. Um, my wife is currently um out of the country, but I would like her to have a voice in this. Uh, she will be getting back on Wednesday. If that's something you guys could make possible, I would really appreciate that.
So here's what I'm, I'm going to tell you is what I, I just, I mean, you may have just heard me say is that regardless of what we do, with the exception of the variance decision, which even in and of itself um could be no, could be, I think could be appealed, but uh two of the three are going to move forward to the city council. And so that hearing date would be posted and there will be an opportunity, because that's the final decision, at least for the um, for the subdivision and the rezone. So just a point of clarity there. So, okay. Anybody else in the chambers who has not testified? Okay, I think we're good. At this point, we'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion. And Ben, you can come back up. You have, there are five minutes for rebuttal.
All right, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thanks once again. Ben Semple, fourteen fifty West Bannock Street, Boise eight three seven zero two. I really do appreciate all the comments that, um, you know, the neighbors came out and provided. Um, I want to touch on some of this as much as I possibly can. Um, so we are not proposing zero foot setbacks. I don't know where that showed up on the plans. Um, they're not twenty feet, but we have between five and I think there's some parts of the buildings that are up to fifteen, sixteen feet from the back of sidewalk, which is where we're measuring our setbacks. Um, so we are going to be working on the design of the fronts of those buildings to articulate the face. We have to put a single tree in the front of every yard. That's part of the MX one requirement. There will be landscaping between the homes and the sidewalks. I'm the landscape architect on the project. Um, I've gone to great lengths to look at trying to incorporate as many pollinators, you know, natives as possible on the site. The city is really encouraging going away from putting too much lawn in the spaces on sites. Primarily within planter strips. Um, it, you end up with overspray in roads and sidewalks. So we have not shown grass in there. We do have two spaces that are on the common lots that do have lawn in them, one of which will have a public access easement. Listening to some of the comments, you know, I think that one of the amenities that probably ends up in one of, or both of those spaces is like a pet. You know, waste bag station kind of thing for people to use. Again, that's publicly accessible. So people walking their dogs to the neighborhood could use that space as well, not just the residents of the units. Um, I also want to reinforce again, these are at maximum three story. I understand that the rooftop living space, a deck would, does present as more height to a building. Um, I don't anticipate there being a lot of privacy issues. We are looking at what the heights of those buildings are at the perimeters. Um, there's upwards of sixty foot trees that are mature, both across the street and in the frontages of this property. Um, that we're going to try to enhance. Um, touching again, back on that landscape, um, as designed, twenty three percent of the site is landscape. Um, that's about a quarter of an acre. And if you include the right of way landscaping, we're at point four three acres of the one point, I think nine six acres of total, including the right of way space. We also have thirteen species of tree, of, uh, trees, and we have seventy trees that are shown on the plans. That does not include the existing trees and the thirteen species does not include the existing species of trees on the site. So we feel very good about the diversity that we're providing. I am a huge proponent of going away from lawn, um, primarily because we live in a desert. Um, we're trying to hit some sustainability goals, um, by reducing our water use on the site, which also would help with some of the drainage issues that I think that one of the neighbors had brought up. Speaking of that, all of our onsite stormwater will be retained onsite. Um, I anticipate subsurface infiltration. Um, we have a civil engineer that is going to be starting on the designs for that. We have Geotech, um, and got infiltration testing. Anything that's in the street would continue to run to ACHD facilities, um, part of this project. If there's ACHD facilities that have to be upgraded, that would be on the developer. Um, the lights on the buildings, um, part of city code. You cannot light trespass onto another person's property. So building mounted lighting will be directed downward, full cutoff shields. Um, we, unless there's streetlights that are required, which we intend to replace the one at nineteenth and Jefferson. Um, if there's others that the city streetlight, uh, department would like to see, we would be installing those as well that can help with some safety. As I spoke about earlier, we will be engaging ACHD to talk about installing two additional stop signs on Jefferson and two on Bannock to create four way stops at those intersections to help with this. I drive through that area a lot in the morning. Um, I live up on the bench, but I work on Bannock and sometimes, especially with construction going on. I do drive down Jefferson or Bannock. And yeah, that intersection there can be challenging. You do have to pay attention to what you're doing. Um, and so we do want to make sure that existing and future residents are safe in this area. You know, we're talking about bodega. We put bodega in there because I thought it'd be nice to have a little community market that you can go to and get a gallon of milk or a loaf of bread. Not cross State Street to go to Albertson's, not go to a fast food restaurant or a gas station or Starbucks or some other coffee shop. This could be an office space. Um, again, the use and the user are still being identified. And so once we have that, we'll be able to know about parking. We do have four onsite parking spaces. Currently, we'd be required to have one for that. All other parking for the townhomes is accommodated onsite through garages.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. Let's go ahead and take five, give everybody a chance to think a little bit and then we'll come back and we'll discuss and make a decision. Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene and, uh, we have three different items in front of us. We have a rezone application, a preliminary plat and a variance. And again, just as a reminder, we are a recommending body to the city council for the rezone and the preliminary plat and a deciding body on the variance. So, um, in terms of this discussion or emotion, up to y'all, I would suggest for what it's worth, we might want to actually go with rezone preliminary plat and variance, just seeming like there's a chronology that kind of goes in that way, but it's up to you guys. So with that, go ahead and open it up to a motion and or discussion. Preferably a motion first.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Seha.
I'm gonna try this. Okay. Um, I move that we recommend approval to city council, um, of CAR twenty five dash seventeen with, uh, the rezone. I do, oh, I do have a question though. There's a condition I want us to consider.
We can go and discuss that after the motion's been made.
Okay.
Unless you're, unless you're suggesting, let me rephrase that. Unless you're wanting to add a condition of approval. If that's what you're suggesting, then go ahead and say that and then we'll see if there's a second.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Can we add conditions to rezones?
I don't know what you mean.
Mr. Chair, uh, rezones, uh, you cannot add conditions to, but subdivisions you can.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. So let's stick with the rezone and then we'll we'll go to the, the preliminary plat.
So, Mr. Chair, would these be three separate?
If it's cleaner, we can do it that way. Yeah, it's, uh, we can do it that way.
I guess maybe let's move forward with, with the first one, which is, um, to recommend, uh, I move that we recommend approval to city council on CAR twenty five dash seventeen, which is the rezone.
Excellent. I have a motion to recommend approval for the rezone, uh, from Commissioner Seha. There's a second.
A second?
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Seha and a second by Commissioner Moore as their discussion.
Mr. Chair. This area is going to be developed and as, um, Jesse shared, the comparison chart between MX one, R two and R three. Um, you know, at the end of the day, the height would be lower under MX one, um, in this area and its proximity to State Street and Fairview, um, is reasonable. So that is why I am in support of the rezone from R two, R three to MX one.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Seha. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I'm also in support of the motion. Um, I think, you know, for the reasons stated, I think that it, it's a little bit odd that the R three height is higher than the MX one. I think that's a little bit confusing. So you know, when, when you're looking at height, which is, you know, based on the public comment, uh, important in this case, especially I think that, you know, the MX one where you do have that opportunity for a lower height, be it five feet, but five feet, it's five feet. Um, and it makes a difference. I think that MX one in terms of height does make a difference. You know, the density is the same. Um, there's no density limit on any of these zones. So I think that's, you know, neither here nor there. And then the setbacks, obviously there's no zero foot setback at the fronts. You know, the streets gave requirements based on, um, back of sidewalk. So it is that back to some extent. Uh, and I think that varies. Just based on the geometry of things. And then the zero foot is the, is the variance beast that we'll talk about later, but in terms of just compatibility with the neighborhood, I find that based on this site with its constraints, corner lots and the height concerns, I find that MX one is appropriate as well.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Okay, I'll just add real quick, my, my question during Q and A about spot zoning. Um, so the whole notion of spot zoning, which was, uh, comment made in some of the letters, um, really has to do with an incompatible type of use. These are both residential. What's, what was proposed, what was there R two and R three is residential. What's being proposed is residential, the exception of the bodega. But by and large, the product overall in terms of land use is the same. So therefore it's not, it doesn't satisfy the definition of what spot zoning is. I just wanted to clarify that because I know it was something that was on people's minds. So. All right. Any other discussion on the rezone? We have an, we have a motion by Commissioner Seha and a second by Commissioner Moore to recommend approval to the rezone. Okay, hearing none with the clerk, please call the roll.
Danley.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Seha.
Aye.
Torres.
Aye.
Dom.
Aye.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Okay, so that takes care of the rezone. Next up, depending upon the commission's approval or desire, either the variance or the preliminary plat.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Seha.
Um, I move that we, uh, recommend approval to city council on item, um, S U B twenty five dash fifty, which is the preliminary plat with a condition. And I'd like, maybe this is further discussion, um, amongst us, but, um, consideration of limiting the height on the development.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Seha with an added, uh, requirement and stipulation within the terms of agreement that the application, uh, limit or not exceed, I would imagine, the proposed height. Is that, is that a better way? Do you want to? Is that good for? We're good with that? Okay. Does that make sense to the rest of the commission? Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second at least for the terms of discussion.
Okay, very good. Uh, a second by Commissioner Torres, discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seha.
You know, I think most of the comment that we've received, um, on this is that, you know, this part, these two parcels were going to be developed. Um, we know that we need housing. We, we need, we really need affordable housing. Understand that this is not affordable housing, unfortunately, but it is housing. Um, we are seeing changes in our neighborhoods. Um, we can look to fifteenth between sixteenth and, and eighteenth, and you have, I think someone said the Travis. You have one further along. Um, I, twenty one units in an area. It's walkable. Yes, it's a bit denser than what's there. Um, but it's that density regardless of the zoning is, would be allowed anyway. Um, I recognize people's concerns about height. I think that was also a concern with the Travis, um, development as well. Um, you know, we, there's only so much we can do from the diocese, um, but I, I would, I would like for the commission to consider, you know, not the height restriction, not to exceed the thirty five. I know that that, that may not be acceptable to the residents. Um, but development is going to occur in that area. So.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Torres.
Um, yeah, I just want to kind of second what my colleague said. I, you know, I've read in many places, we need on average two thousand how, uh, homes built per year just to keep up with the demand in our community. We're a growing community. We're behind on housing. I, I agree, we need more affordable housing. Um, I will point out that every additional unit, even if it, they're at the higher end, people tend to move into those units and often free up older housing stock that is cheaper. So that does at least put some downward pressure on housing, but, but we're so far behind, we just really need more housing being built at a rate faster, honestly, than it's getting built at this point. So, so that's one of the reasons I support the motion. As far as the height goes, you know, I, I can go either way on that. I mean, um, I just kind of want, you know, people here to understand, like, your neighborhoods have always changed. You know, when your homes were built, initially there might've been a few homes there and then they added more. Your neighborhoods are going to change. They always have changed. Um, we don't always like change. Um, but, you know, we up at, at this dais have to consider not just the character of your neighborhood, we also have to consider the entire city. And I just want to get back to my earlier point, we need housing. Um, so while this might not be perfect, it is, it is additional housing adding to the supply in our city that we, that we really desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Torres. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I think I'm generally in agreement with Commissioner Torres. I, I agree with the motion on the subdivision. I don't feel strongly about the height. Um, I think we're, you know, I, I could, I could go either way. I, I think that the developers made some concessions for some two story units and some three story units, trying to keep it in that thirty five foot range with those, with those pop ups for the elevator and, and the stairs and all that good stuff. Um, I also think that, you know, the right of way, the right of ways here are exceptionally large in most cases, even though the streets are narrow, the, the actual right of ways are pretty large for a residential street. Um, there's also some large trees that the applicant is going, you know, kind of out of their way to preserve and, you know, integrate with, um, the healthy ones anyways. So I think, you know, there's a lot of pieces and parts that are being considered to kind of help mitigate screen and integrate with the neighborhood. So the height thing, I think I can go either way, but I am in support of the subdivision.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore.
Chair.
Commissioner Dom.
Um, I'm in support of the motion. Um, I think, uh, Commissioner Moore pointed out some of the parts that I agree with the, her wording very well. So, um, again, the height I get trying to put a limitation on there, but again, I go with it either direction. So, thank you.
Yes, that leaves my comments. Um, so I'm in favor of the motion and I'm, I'm gonna, what I'll do is just add one thing that we hear a lot of in this chambers is, uh, a, a general desire for us as a city and or a commission to ensure or require affordable housing, AMI being below eighty percent, sixty percent, whatever it is that we're shooting for. The reality is the state of Idaho does not allow us to do that, period, point blank. Our state code does not allow a city to do that, any city. And so we don't have that tool. Um, we, we also don't have really the tool to limit the Airbnbs. If I could, I would absolutely do that, but we, we don't have that tool either. Uh, January fourteenth or something like that, the session begins. Just saying, that'd be something that would be great for them to hear, um, and be able to give the cities of Idaho those tools. Uh, the height thing I just want to add is that if we look at this chart, Uh, the height thing I just want to add is that if we look at this chart, this table, what is permitted right now. Is exceptionally taller by about fifteen to, or actually about fifteen feet, but about thirty to forty percent taller. Than what is being proposed and the top floor for the tallest of structures is actually fairly hollow. It's not a solid structure. I understand it's still got some elements of height. I, I can understand that. Um, but it is not a solid forty-five feet, which is permitted and even up to fifty feet in the southern portion at least. Of what is there right now. The one concern that I've heard this evening. That I, I think is legitimate and I don't really frankly know how to handle it is the construction. Because I think that's true. I think there is gonna be um upwards of, you know, a year, two years worth of construction time. That could take place and could be um intrusive. And so we don't really have a tool to do that. Except for our construction permitting process and, and ensuring that all of those crews are doing the right thing. I know, I'll tell you this. Um, for what it's worth, the applicant here, Ben, is probably one of the, in my opinion, one of the best in the business. Um, and has proposed so many great things. If anybody's gonna get it right, it's probably gonna be them. Um, so I, I take stock in that. Uh, but otherwise, I'm in supportive, support of the motion. And so with that, with the clerk, please call roll.
Mister Chair, very quickly before you do that, could you please restate the, the condition?
Me or Commissioner Seha?
Your choice.
Uh, do you want to do it? Go ahead.
Mister Chair. Oh, sorry. I move that we recommend approval um to city council of items. Uh, S U B twenty-five dash fifty with um and a additional condition. Um. On the height, and that is that it not exceed the thirty-five foot. Height limit identified in the application. Is that correct?
And I'd just like to clarify if that includes any like mechanical, um, any, anything that might typically go on a roof. It's just nothing to exceed. Just to clarify that.
So what we're getting at, and this is the detail, is that some of those elements that were shown in the renderings exceed thirty-five feet. I don't recall, if anybody can pull this up, that would be great. What? The height of some of those features, what is the maximum height of what is being proposed? I think it's something like forty. To forty-five feet, somewhere in there, but I don't recall.
So I think, Mister Chair, I, I think that um Ben said that the parapet, is that right? The was um thirty-five and then the additional was eight to ten. Is that correct? I see a nodding.
So then I think it'd be cleaner if we restate the term of the, the condition of approval, recommended condition for approval. To not exceed, and I think if, if it's eight to ten, let's go to ten, that the structure not exceed forty-five feet. And that maybe the living spaces be not exceed thirty-five feet. I think that's what we're getting at. The internal living spaces is third below thirty-five feet. The external deck goes from thirty-five to upwards of forty-five feet. I think we need to make sure we're clear on that. So if that helps, can you restate it one more time?
Okay, I'll try this again. Mister Chair, I move that we recommend approval to city council of item S U B twenty-five dash fifty. Um, with an additional condition. That the height of the living space not exceed thirty-five. Um, feet.
Okay. Does that work? Okay, then we're good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry, I'm pointing in the wrong direction. Commissioner Torres, we have a second, and I think we've had discussion on this. So unless there's any outstanding thing, let's go ahead and have clerk, please call the roll.
Danley.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Seha.
Aye.
Torres.
Aye.
Dome.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, last but not least is the variance, which we are a deciding board for and up for a motion and discussion.
Mister Chair.
Mister Dome.
Um, I move that we approve the variance CVA twenty-five dash thirty-four. At nineteen oh seven West Jefferson Street. Um, for the encroaching on the rear setbacks within the development.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the variance in uh with the terms and conditions to afford. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and I have a second by Commissioner Seha. Is there discussion? No discussion, okay?
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I'll, I'll go for it then. Um, I agree with the motion. I think that the, the variance to me, I know there was some confusion about a variance in the front. Versus where the variance was. The variance is just in the rear. Um, and to me, I understand that it's just to help alleviate. Having twenty-two different easements or something like that at the rear setback and allow access and, and so allow some of that. Um, alley access without creating more curb cuts that eliminates more. That eliminates conflicts with pedestrians when you have fewer curb cuts. So this variance is really just to facilitate a lot of that stuff and to, to give those. Those units the access, but it will not impact street front setbacks. It will not impact any sort of exterior, external setbacks. It's wholly internal to the site.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Moore. Any other discussion? So just to clarify, I think it's important that we. Level set here. We are changing the setback requirements from what is currently zoned, at least. The R two and the R three. However, we agree and we recommend unanimously to the council to change the zone. Which therefore then changes the setbacks, right, to what is required of the MX one. And what is being asked is specifically the variance to encroach on the o-only one of them is the rear. Setback within the MX one. So just, I think it's just to be fair, there is a shift in the setback. From how it was as it entered today versus how it's moving forward. I agree with Commissioner Moore in terms of the reasoning for it. I think it's just important that we are clear on that, though. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none with the clerk, please call the roll.
Danley.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Seha.
Aye.
Torres.
Aye.
Dome.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you for coming out.